All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, I'll ask our clerk to please kick us off with the calling of the roll call of members.
Counselor Tesh.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Here.
Counselor Sandiget. Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Present.
Counselor DeJesus.
Present.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Recupero.
Here.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Present.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Ten members present, one absent. You have a quorum.
Okay, first on the agenda, we have memorials and celebratory resolutions.
First item on the agenda, we have a resolution introduced by Counselor Robinson dedicating North Chelsea Day.
Excuse me, Mr. Cliff, for one second while I put my ear. I can't hear without magic ear.
Okay, Counselor Recupero will hold on real quickly. We're good to go?
All right.
All ready. All right, clerk.
Whereas in 2024, the city of Chelsea is commemorating the 400th anniversary of its founding as a settlement. And whereas originally known as Winnetonka, Chelsea was formally incorporated in 1739. And whereas the city of Revere originally known as Brumney Marsh was settled in 1626, becoming part of Boston from 1632 through 1739 until it became part of the city of Chelsea. And whereas Revere remained part of Chelsea until 1846, when what is today Revere and Winthrop were reincorporated as North Chelsea. And whereas the settlement remained known as North Chelsea until it was renamed Revere in 1871 in honor of Paul Revere, a key figure during the American Revolutionary War. And whereas Chelsea and Revere share a long history and continue to cooperate today on a number of issues that affect the residents of our communities. And whereas the Chelsea 400th Gala will be held on Thursday, June 27, 2024, at the Spring Hill Suites in Revere. Now therefore, it will be resolved that the Chelsea City Council recognizes June 27, 2024 as North Chelsea Day in the city of Chelsea, acknowledging the shared history between Chelsea and Revere and express profound gratitude to the city of Revere for working with the city of Chelsea on issues that affect our communities and the entire region.
Thank you, clerk. Counselor...
Adopt this shenanigans on the suspension. No objections.
All right, seeing no objections, you have the floor, counselor.
Very briefly, we had a very good, strong committee led by our city solicitor and the Chamber of Commerce. And we had a lot of events that are happening. The gala is on Thursday night. It's sold out. For those of you who didn't get tickets, shame on you. And we're geared up for Chelsea Day, September 21st. We were able to raise enough money to have fireworks in the city of Chelsea for the first time in several years.
Legal fireworks.
Yeah.
Legal fireworks, yes. Thank you, counselor. All right. Will you be proceeding to hand out the certificates?
Actually, this for taking the lead on improving government transparency through establishing an e-notify system, ensuring all city council records are fully accessible for residents of the city of Chelsea. It was a project worked on with Cliff Cunningham, I mean. And also a person who's handled... Denise Ortega, who handled the website for the 400 Committee. She did an outstanding job. And the other person is our Deputy City Manager Devon Fields, who also worked on the project. I'd like to present you with...
Congratulations to all of our honorees. Congratulations. All right, clerk, please take us on to the next celebratory resolution.
Next, we have a celebratory resolution introduced by Counselor Recupero.
Counselor Recupero, you have the floor.
I would like to give these lovely ladies one of these things that we recognize as pioneers. Women deserve all they get and more. So if you mind coming up and receive your awards.
Do you want to read up, read the names?
You can read the names.
I will read the names for you guys. Okay. This evening, we are honoring Kate Fox. Congratulations.
Tell them why they're getting it. I didn't say why you's got it. Let me tell you why you got it. You got it for being a city manager, an assistant, a temporary acting city manager. And that's a great honor, and it's great for you's women to do it. And there should be more for women like that. Thank you.
I'm going to read the little blurb as well, okay, counselor?
Go ahead, go ahead.
This next honoree is for Cheryl Watson. For your commitment to excellence, integrity, and inclusivity sets a remarkable example for all of us. You have not only demonstrated exceptional leadership skills, but have also paved the way for future generations of women. Thank you, Cheryl. Kim Driscoll. She's not here. But congratulations to Kim Driscoll. And Devon Fields. Congratulations to everyone we are honoring this evening. Let's move on to public speaking. We do not have anyone here for a public hearing. Anyone here for public speaking? Seeing no one here for public speaking, let's move right along. Are there any motions on the floor? Okay, moving on to approval of the minutes.
First, we have approval of the minutes of the June 3, 2024, regular meeting of the Chelsea City Council.
Any motions on the floor?
Move to accept and file the minutes, please, under suspension if there's no objection.
Seeing no objections, moving on.
We move on to communications from the city manager. We have a copy of a communication received from the city manager responding to City Council Order 24-131, Garden Cemetery. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to the Council Order 24-131.
Wait the rest of the reading, accept and file the communication.
Seeing no objections. Bless you.
Next, we have a communication received from the city manager requesting council approval of a five-year contract for the Police Department TASER contract. Dear councilors, I am writing with the request that the city council approve up to a five-year contract for new police department tasers. The city has issued a procurement process for tasers. The Chelsea Police Department was granted $300,000 for tasers under the FY24 CIP.
Madam President, motion to waive the rest of the reading, accept and file under communication. Something is coming up later.
All right, moving on.
Next, we have a communication received from the city manager requesting approval of a five-year contract for Public Works Department trash disposal contract. Dear councilors, I am writing with the request that the city council approve up to a five-year contract with Wheel Liberator Saugus Incorporated for trash disposal with the Department of Public Works. Our current contract with Wheel Liberator for trash disposal expires on December 31, 2024.
Madam President, motion to waive the rest of the reading, accept and file under communications. If there are no objections, something is coming up under new business later.
Seeing none, moving on.
Next, we have a communication from the city manager requesting approval for a department to pay a prior year expense. Dear councilors, I am writing to request approval for the School Department Special Education Team to make a payment of a prior year expense from their respective FY24 budget. From time to time, municipal agencies are unable to effectuate payments to a vendor in the year that the goods or services are provided. When such instances occur, the city council must approve the payments from the current year department budget for the prior year's obligations. Currently, we have identified an outstanding prior year city obligation that totaled $2,918.50. The vendor base date discovered that they had mailed the department three invoices that they did not receive. The school department conducted their own audit of the FY2022-2023 school year and found that they had not paid these bills since they did not receive them. Their respective department has sufficient funds to meet the outstanding obligation. No new funds are required. The only action necessary is council approval to make the payment. A copy of the recommended order is also attached.
Accept and file the communication. Something will be coming up on the new business.
Thank you, counselor. Seeing no objections, moving on.
Next, we have a communication from the city manager requesting council approval of union contract with NEPBA Local 192, 911.
Accept and file the communication. There'll be something coming up.
Thank you, counselor. Seeing no objections, moving on.
We have a communication received from the city manager requesting approval of a union contract with Teamsters Local 25, 911 Supervisors.
Accept and file the communication. There'll be something coming up in the new business.
Thank you, counselor. Seeing no objections, moving on to communications and petitions to the council.
We have one more. We have one more communication from the city manager requesting approval of 20-year pilot agreement with Flatiron.
Counselor Manuel.
This is a communication. We do not adopt it yet. But I would like to move a motion to waive the rest of the reading and to also move out of order the order related to this communication, which is the 20-year pilot agreement with Flatiron.
Okay, Counselor Manuel moves to amend the order.
I move to waive the rest of the reading of the communications and to move the order related to these communications out of order so that we can speak on it now.
Okay. Seeing no...
Any objections?
Any objections? No objections?
I'm sorry?
We're not voting right now, counselor. We're just trying to...
When can we vote on this?
So hold on one second. There's a request on amendment, and then there's a question.
So just for clarity, I just want, because I didn't hear a few of his language. So I want to make a motion to waive the readings. I don't know if this is to object to the first reading, if this is where I can do it here before we go forward. I believe it is. So I'd like to make a motion to object to the first reading.
So there's a motion on the floor first by Manuel.
Yeah, but you still would have to read it.
And he's trying to waive the reading so that we can continue...
I object to taking it out of order.
Okay. Counselor Taylor objects to taking it out of order. Counselor Brown.
Next order of business, we have communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication received from the Assistant Parking Clerk regarding the agenda items approved at the June 4, 2024, meeting of the Traffic and Parking Commission.
Is there a motion?
Accept and file under suspension if there are no objections.
Okay, seeing no objections, moving on.
We have a communication received from Chelsea resident Raymond Bell.
Yeah, read the communication.
My name is Raymond Bell. I reside at 21 Madison Avenue.
Madam President, I'd like to accept and file the communication, waive the rest of the reading if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, moving on.
We move on to committee reports. We have a committee report received from Council President DeJesus regarding the meeting of the Subcommittee on Conference held on June 3, 2024.
How does the council wish to proceed?
Accept and file under communications if there are no objections.
Okay, seeing no objections, moving on.
Committee report received from Council President DeJesus regarding the meeting of the Subcommittee on Conference held June 4, 2024.
How does the council wish to proceed?
Accept and file under communications if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, moving on.
We have a copy of a committee report received from the Council President regarding the meeting of the Subcommittee on Conference held June 10, 2024.
How does the council wish to proceed?
Accept and file under communications, please.
Under suspension.
Under suspension, seeing no objections.
Seeing no objections, moving on.
We have a committee report received from Counselor Taylor regarding the meeting of the Subcommittee on Ways and Means held June 11, 2024.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Accept and file the committee report.
Seeing no objections, moving on.
And our final committee report received from the Council President regarding the meeting of the Subcommittee on Conference held June 11, 2024.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Accept and file under communications if there are no objections.
Okay, moving on, no objections.
We move on to second readings. We have a communication received from the city manager requesting approval of appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions being read for the second time. Dear councilors, pursuant to Section 4-2 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. For reappointment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, Kelly Shambly of Chelsea, Crystal Correel Gomboa of Chelsea, Alexis Turgeon of Chelsea, Mr. Garrett DeYoung of Chelsea, Terry Widener of Chelsea. For appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, Deputy City Manager of Operations Devon Fields to take the place of former Deputy City Manager Ned Keef. Reappointment to the Community Preservation Committee, Bianca Servlin of Chelsea, Lauren Sokol of Chelsea. Reappointment to the Zoning Board, Joan Cromwell of Chelsea. Reappointment to the Human Rights Commission, Olivia Ann Walsh of Chelsea. To the Board of Health, Jessica Wins of Chelsea. Appointment to the Board of Register of Voters, Cheryl Sullivan of Chelsea. Appointment to the Traffic and Parking Commission, Thomas Curtin of Chelsea. Appointment to the Planning Board, Ms. Regina Taylor of Chelsea. Appointment to the Council on Elder Affairs, Marcus Queen of Chelsea.
Make a motion to adopt under roll call vote.
Seeing no objections. All right, proceeding with a roll call vote.
Roll call vote was requested.
Should we vote on Regina separately so that I can sit on the rest of them?
We could.
Madam, Madam President, I'd like to move the vote for just Regina Taylor forward so that Counselor Taylor can sit for the rest of them.
We are voting on them as a whole.
Never mind. I withdraw my motion if Counselor Taylor is okay with it.
Thank you, though, counselor.
Yep.
Motion withdrawn. Order is for roll call vote on the appointments. Yes, vote to adopt. Counselor Tesh.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor is absent. Counselor Vega is also absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes, sorry.
Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Appointments are approved.
Madam President, can we just clarify what just happened just to the public to...
Clarify for the public?
Clarify why the counselor was, had to step outside, just to make sure that the audience is aware.
Yes, so Counselor Taylor has recused himself from the vote due to relationship with one of the person, one of the individuals that was voted on.
What clarification? I'm just, I'm just curious as to, as to why that was necessary, if I could just hear from the city solicitor.
Absolutely.
There's, there is no, this is a volunteer position, and there is no remuneration. So I'm just curious as to why the recusal was necessary.
State ethics is not just about money. It's also about the appearance of impropriety. And appointing your wife to a board is, 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 is the appearance is that it was tainted vote. So it just looks, it's not like she was your sister, but she's your wife. She lives in your household. It's not just about financial benefits. It's also about basically quote unquote power. And, and that's why it is best for you to recuse yourself in this situation.
That's good enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. All right, moving on. Oh, yes. Clerk, could you walk us through the breakdown? Clerk has prepared for us a smoother or quicker process for our next few votes.
So councilors in front of you, you have a list of all the financial orders that are pending as second readings. We broke them down, how you can combine them into condensed roll calls. Some of them are lumped together when they're similar, but ones that are not similar, we kept separate. So rather than have 27 votes, we condensed it down to about 10.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Cliff. All right.
If there are no objections to proceeding.
No objections.
Seeing, okay, moving on.
So first item on the agenda under second readings, we have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor being read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee on the awarding of grant funding to the FY2024 Community Preservation Project in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, 3D, and in accordance with the Revised Code of Ordinances of the City of Chelsea, Chapter 2, Article 7, Division 3, Section 2-330. And be it further ordered that the Chelsea City Council appropriates the following amount from the Community Preservation Act, budgetary reserve as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, $66,000 for Affordable Housing Trust Fund Housing Specialist.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Roll call vote on the adoption. There are no objections.
Seeing no objections, we'll proceed with a roll call vote.
I, madam, I'd like to speak on it.
Okay, yes, you have the floor, counselor.
So I just wanted to make one thing clear on this order that the, this is not a new position for the Community Preservation Committee. This is, this is an existing position that already exists in City Hall. And the reason why we're giving money to the Community Preservation Commission is because the law allows the city to recoup some of the funds in order to pay for the administration costs. So for any of you who had contacted me about, why are we having a new position for this? This is not a new position. This is an already existing position in a way to save some money for the taxpayers. Well, kind of.
Thank you, counselor. Moving on.
Roll call vote requested. Yes, vote to adopt. Counselor Tesh.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent. Order is adopted.
Perfect, moving right along.
We have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor being read for the second time. Order that in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 64, budget management procedures whereby costs incurred in FY21 were not paid and are owed to vendors. And to meet this obligation, funds are required from the current FY24 budget as noted. City Council authorized the following expenditures to satisfy unpaid balances that total $6,911.38 from prior years as follows. Two from FY21 from IT, one in the amount of $5,039.61, and one in the amount of $1,871.77 from AT&amp;T.
Ask for roll call vote on the adoption. If there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, moving into a roll call vote.
Roll call vote requested. Yes, vote to adopt. Counselor Tesh.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson. Ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent. Order is adopted.
Thank you, clerk.
Move on. We have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor being read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of $171,354 from free cash to fiscal year 2024 Police Department Contract Services account for year three of five-year body worn camera contract.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Roll call vote for the adoption. If there are no objections.
Okay, seeing no objections, moving into a roll call vote.
A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tesh is absent. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is also absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Order is adopted.
Thank you.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor being read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of $50,600 from free cash to fiscal year 2024 MIS Department Computer Equipment Account for HVAC, CoolRacks, and Marriachi Access Point.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Roll call vote on the adoption. If there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, moving into a roll call vote.
Roll call vote requested. Yes, vote to adopt. Counselor Tesh is also absent. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega, absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia. Counselor Sandiget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Order adopted.
Thank you, clerk.
We have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor being read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of $30,000 from free cash to fiscal year 2024 DPW Structures and Grounds Department Building Maintenance Account for contingency for repairs, maintenance, including parks.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to adopt under roll call vote, Madam President.
Seeing no objections, moving into a roll call vote.
Yes, vote to adopt. Counselor Tesh.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega, absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent. Order is adopted.
Thank you.
The following orders are 24F-66 through 24F-72. They all qualify as transfer from salary reserve to cover salary deficits. They can all be taken a one roll call vote if, no objection.
Ask for roll call on the adoption. If there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote. How does the council feel about reading them out loud? Should we have them read?
They've already been read.
No.
Yes, okay. Okay, yeah.
No reading?
No reading. Unless we...
Roll call vote ordered on agenda items 24F-66 through 24F-72. Salary deficits funded by salary reserve transfers. Yes, vote to adopt. Counselor Tesh.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent. Orders are adopted.
Thank you, clerk.
We move on. Agenda items 24F-73 through 24F-79 are all transfers from free cash to cover salary deficits and can be taken as one vote if requested.
Ask for roll call vote on the adoption. If there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, moving forward.
A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tesh.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega, absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson. Ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent. Orders are adopted.
Thank you, clerk. Moving on.
Move on. We have agenda items 24F-80... Move on, we have agenda items twenty-four F eighty through twenty-four F eighty-four, which are transfers from free cash to fund department deficits and can be taken at one time if requested.
Is there a motion?
Roll call vote on the adoption, if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote.
Roll call vote requested, yes vote to adopt. Counsel Teshu?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Vega, absent. Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Santagut?
Yes.
Counsel Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Coopero?
Yes.
Counsel Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent, orders are adopted.
Thank you Clerk. Moving on.
We have an order introduced by Counsel Taylor being read for the second time. Order that in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter forty-four, Section sixty-four, budget management procedures whereby costs incurred in FY twenty-two and twenty-three were not paid and are owed. And to meet this obligation, funds are required from the current FY twenty-four budget. That the Chelsea City Council authorizes the following expenditures totaling two thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. And appropriate this amount from free cash to the FY twenty-four Personnel Department Life Insurance Account to satisfy unpaid balances from prior year as, as follows.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Make a motion to adopt under roll call vote, Madam President. No objection.
Seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote.
Roll call vote requested, yes vote is to adopt. Counsel Teshu?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Vega, absent. Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Santagut?
Yes.
Counsel Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Coopero?
Yes.
Counsel Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent, order is adopted. We have an order introduced by Counsel Taylor being read for the second time, establishing six city six revolving funds. Whereas pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter forty-four subsections fifty-three E one dash two, the city has adopted a new ordinance, Section two dash two-hundred, authorizing six revolving funds. And whereas each year, the ordinance requires the city council to vote annually on or before July first on the amount that may be spent from each of these revolving funds during the upcoming fiscal year. Now therefore be it ordered as follows. Chelsea Community Schools, aggregate expenditures from the fund shall not exceed one hundred thousand dollars in a single fiscal year. All money received after that fund has reached a balance shall be credited to the general fund. Elder Affairs Revolving Account, aggregate expenditures from the fund shall not exceed one thousand dollars in a single fiscal year. All money received after the fund has reached a balance shall be credited to the general fund. Emergency Management Hazardous Material Revolving Fund, aggregate expenditures shall not exceed thirty thousand dollars in a single fiscal year. All money received after the fund has received a balance shall be credited to the general fund. Vacant, unsafe buildings and nuisance properties revolving fund, aggregate expenditures shall not exceed thirty thousand dollars in a single fiscal year. All money received after the fund has reached a balance shall be credited to the general fund. Tax Title Foreclosure Properties Revolving Fund, aggregate expenditures not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars in a single fiscal year. All money received after the fund has a balance shall be credited to the general fund. And Chelsea Public Library Revolving Fund, aggregate expenditures not to exceed twenty thousand dollars in a single fiscal year. All money received after the fund has reached a balance shall be credited to general fund.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Adopt under a roll call vote.
All right, seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote.
Yes vote to adopt. Counsel Teshu?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Vega, absent. Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Santagut?
Yes.
Counsel Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Coopero?
Yes.
Counsel Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent, order adopted.
Thank you Clerk. Moving on.
We have an order introduced by Counsel Taylor being read for the second time regarding authorization of a revolving account for the school department's non-resident student tuition revolving fund. Whereas Section seventy-one F of Chapter seventy-one of the general laws authorizes cities and towns to accept and establish departmental revolving funds subject to certain budgetary restrictions. And whereas the City of Chelsea School Committee adopted and implemented a tuition fee to be charged to other public school systems wishing to use the Chelsea Public School Special Education Programs.
Madam President, I move to waive the rest of the reading and accept, uh, I move for roll call vote.
Thank you Counsel. Seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote.
Roll call vote has been requested, yes vote to adopt. Counsel Teshu?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Vega, absent. Counsel Tenere Garcia? Counsel Santagut?
Yes.
Counsel Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Coopero?
Yes.
Counsel Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent, order is adopted.
Thank you Clerk.
We have our final second reading, we have an order introduced by Counsel Teshu being read for the second time.
Madam President, I move to waive the rest of the reading and move to adopt under roll call vote, if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote.
Roll call vote has been requested, yes vote to adopt. Counsel Teshu?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Vega, absent. Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Santagut?
Yes.
Counsel Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Coopero?
Yes.
Counsel Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent, order is adopted. That concludes second reading.
Thank you Clerk, moving on to new business.
Our first item under new business, we have an order introduced by Counsel Taylor. Order that in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter forty-four, Section sixty-four, Budget Management Procedures whereby costs incurred in FY twenty-three were not paid and are owed to the vendors. And to meet this obligation, funds are required from the current FY twenty-four budget as noted. The Chelsea City Council authorizes the following expenditures to satisfy the unpaid balance that totaled two thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents from prior year as follows. FY twenty-three School Department, two thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars for Bay State Interpreters for Translation Services.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Move to the Ways and Means Committee.
Seeing no objections. Thank you Counsel.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel Taylor. Order that pursuant to Section four dash three L of the City, Chelsea City Charter, the Chelsea City Council authorizes the cost items set forth in the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with the New England Police Benevolent Association Local one-nine-two representing E nine-one one dispatchers memorialized in the memorandum of agreement for the period July first, twenty-twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven, dated May third, twenty-twenty-four.
Move to the Ways and Means Committee.
Seeing no objections. Thank you Counsel.
We have an order introduced by Counsel Taylor. Order that pursuant to Section four dash three L of the Chelsea City Charter, the Chelsea City Council approves the cost items set forth in the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with the Teamsters Local twenty-five representing E nine-one one supervisors memorialized in the memorandum of agreement for the period July first, twenty-twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven, dated May third, twenty-twenty-four.
Move to the Ways and Means Committee.
Seeing no objections, moving on.
We move on, we have an order introduced by Counsel President De Jesus. Order that pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty B, Section twelve, the Chelsea City Council approves a five-year contract for tasers for the Chelsea Police Department.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Madam President? Move to Ways and Means under suspension, if there's no objections.
Uh, can I take a quick pause and have our city manager give us a few words?
Thank you, Counsel President. On, on the next two items, what we are requesting for the city council is to allow us to have a, a, a longer time period contract than is, is allowed by law, which is, is three years. With, uh, the next two items in particular, as we discussed in, uh, I guess I'll speak on, on the second item, which is the trash disposal, uh, 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 contract. As, as, as we discussed in your subcommittee about wa- waters, sewer, and trash rates, we are trying to secure as long, as longer contract as possible with our, our disposal site, which is in Saugus, Wheel Liberator. Given the, the summer recess, I, I respectfully request for the council to have a vote on, on these two items tonight. Again, on, on the, uh, on the trash disposal contract, it will allow us to enter into a longer agreement that, that is, uh, allowed under law, which is, is three years. And, uh, on the taser, uh, uh, contract, it is exactly the same reason. We, we want to enter into a longer term, uh, uh, contract. We are not asking for, uh, any funds i- i- in this matter. All we're asking for, uh, is for approval of a five-year contract as opposed to what is allowed by law, which is a, a three-year contract.
Thank you city manager. Any questions for our city manager regarding?
Is there any urgency in terms of, uh, you know, seeing this today versus next fiscal year?
Potentially in September, right? So, absolutely. So, so the, the, on the second item, it's personal to me and I shared it, uh, uh, in the water, uh, water sewer and, and trash main that we had. We, we, we have been trying for six months to get a, a, a new contract locked in with Wheel Liberator. We have a, a, a contract that is, that is in draft form. Uh, and, and we are negotiating the final terms of, of, of that contract. And, and my fear is, is that given the uncertainty in, in, in the trash environment in, in our state, particularly with, with, with the site in Saugus, uh, waiting until, until September is going to be too long to wait, uh, in, in order to, uh, secure a contract that is going to expire in December thirtieth. If, if for some reason we were to lose that opportunity, it would be a major scramble uh, uh, from, from September to, to December, which is when our current contract expires, to find another site to take, to take, uh, the trash to. As I shared with, with the council at that subcommittee, uh, the next available site is in Haverhill, which is, uh, i- i- is significantly, uh, uh, farther. So again, I, I, uh, doing this now will, will allow us, uh, to finalize the disagreement and lock something in right, right now.
Counselor Jimenez?
So two quick questions on the, um, the tasers contract. When is that contract, first question?
So that is a new asset. So, so the, the, the city council, uh, uh, as part of the FY twenty-four CIP, uh, uh, funded a, a new tasers. So tasers are a, a non-lethal option, a- a- as you know. The tasers themselves, uh, uh, will come with, with a, a maintenance agreement. And, and what we are trying to do is essentially lock in a, a contract as long as possible to, uh, to guarantee the warranty and, and the service on, 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 on the tasers. So the, the, the council has already voted on, on, on the money. So that's all said, what, what we're asking for i- is, is approval to, uh, uh, secure a longer term contract that is allowed by law.
And the, and the con- the contract is, you said for the maintenance, not for the purchase of the tasers? Or, or are we contracting out the?
Both. So it is both. It's for the asset itself, the, the actual tasers. But, but it, it comes with a, a maintenance agreement, a software agreement, and a service agreement. So if one were to fail, we, we, we would, we would, uh, return it. But it, it is a new asset that we don't have in place right now.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, thank you city manager. Counsel, uh, or Counsel Robinson, do you wish to proceed with a roll call vote? Do you wish to withdraw?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll withdraw, I think, and just. Instead of sending it to Ways and Means.
Okay, and then Rick Coopero, Counsel, you're sending it to a roll call vote, right?
Yes.
Okay. Seeing no objections?
I just want to speak briefly. So I want to thank the city manager for this year update. I did read, um, the proposal, I spoke to one of my colleagues about it. Um, obviously I had a little, um, concern about the five year over the three years, which we normally do. But I understand what he's saying. If folks don't realize what he's saying about the distance and the traffic and all that, you unpack that into the City of Chelsea, um, we'll hear more concerns of residents trying to get their trash picked up in a timely manner. So what he's doing is eventually trying to get something locked down. So we will have something secure for the next five years. And we'll be able to deal with this closer entity instead of have to wait to, um, the next entity, which I believe he said was forty miles up in Haverhill, come in and out through the traffic. So, uh, I think it's a better situation for the city. We just have to see how it plays out. Thank you, Ms. Manager.
All right. Thank you Counsel. Counsel Robinson?
Actually, just to speak on the matter, somebody that has experience in, in the rubbish business. I feel we had a contract for a long time to pick up Boston Proper in Quincy. And at one point, we couldn't, um, deliver construction materials here in Massachusetts. We used to have to send those materials down to Rhode Island. So that created a big cost, um, for us and our trucks. We're into air and the gas and things like that. So I think it's appropriate to sign the contract for five years so that we know, um, where we're at. Cause the, the next lo- closest location is forty miles away. So, um, once you load out a truck and you gotta drive to Haverhill and return, that's like an hour and a half by the time you go to the dump and dump. So.
Thank you Counsel.
I'll be voting in favor.
Okay. Thank you Counsel. Counsel Rick Coopero?
I have a question for the city manager. So this is a five-year deal. But this means that within five years, that the trash will go up minimal. You get the, the rates locked in because I want the people to understand, if we vote in a five year, so how much will they go up each additional year? So I want the, the public to understand exactly what we're doing.
Unfortunately Counsel, I, I, I can't give a long-term projection on trash rates. I, this year, uh, we, we presented to the city council that for FY twenty-five, we're gonna have an eight percent increase on trash. The, uh, and, and this is what we, we discussed in your subcommittee. Uh, and, um, uh, eight, eight percent is, is considering what, what we are seeing, uh, uh, with, with, with our neighbors. Uh, it's actually pretty modest. And, and as you know, the, the, Chelsea has a trash fee. Uh, the trash fee is not imposed on owner occupied units. Uh, but the trash fee is also, the trash cost is subsidized by our, our, our taxes as well. So, so, yeah, um, we, we hope of course to, to negotiate a, a, um, the best deal possible uh, uh, with, with, with this company. And, uh, our city solicitor and I are, are working very hard at, at, at doing that. Unfortunately, as, as Counsel Robinson said, there's not a lot of options out there, right? The, the, it's either Saugus or Haverhill, right? And, and even if Haverhill were to offer us a lower price, there's other things for, for us to consider, including traffic time, including a, a possible impact on trash pickup rates, uh, and, and, and a few other issues.
Thank you city manager. Counsel, can you move us into the roll call?
No, just one more question.
One more question Counsel.
So I understand what you're saying, but the point is, okay, you increased that eight percent this year. So I want the, the public to understand. So for five years, it could increase up to twenty percent. There's no amount it could increase. There's no guarantee that that is what you're gonna get. So whatever we do now, it's gonna affect the people for five years down the road. So this is what I want the, the public to understand, that what we're doing now is gonna affect you five years down the road. is gonna affect you five years down the road. And there's no guarantee that whatever 8% went up this year, that's not gonna go up 16% next year. Then it would, because that's the deal we're making. So, whatever we vote, it's a good, you know, whatever we do, it's gonna affect you for five years. Just remember that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Taylor?
So, I'll be brief. This is, what the Counselor, I think, is trying to say, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but we don't have a lot of options. The Wheel Liberator option is by far the most economic for the City of Chelsea. It's gonna cost a lot more money to truck everything to Havrell. So, while the trash fees may go up, they will go up less than if we vote this down. So, this is a pretty good deal for Chelsea in a world where we see rising prices on everything these days. I'll be satisfied with them going up a little less. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, City Manager. All right. Counselor Rick Cooper, we're moving on with our roll call vote.
Yes, vote to adopt. Counselor Teshi?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Santiget?
Yes.
Counselor Hermenas Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Cooper?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
10 in favor, 0 opposed, 1 absent. Order is adopted.
Thank you, Clerk.
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President De Jesus. Ordered that pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30B, subsection 12, the Chelsea City Council approves a five-year contract for trash disposal with Wheel Liberator Saugus Incorporated for the Chelsea Department of Public Works.
Motion on the floor?
Motion to adopt under roll call vote.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no objections. Moving on to a roll call vote.
Yes, vote to adopt. Counselor Teshi?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vega, absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Santiget?
Yes.
Counselor Hermenas Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Cooper? Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
10 in favor, 0 opposed, 1 absent. Order is adopted.
Thank you, Clerk.
Next item on the agenda, we have an order introduced by Counselor Santiget. Ordered that the Traffic and Parking Commission look into implementing traffic calming measures on Cottage Street, particularly the section between Highland Street and Shawman Street, to address speeding motor vehicles and mopeds.
Counselor Santiget?
I move to accept and file and send it to Traffic and Parking Commission, and I'd like to speak on it, please.
Are we adopting it under suspension?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm seeing no objections. You have the clerk, Counselor.
Great. Basically, I had heard from some constituents that this particular portion of Cottage Street was seeing an increase in speeding cars and mopeds. So, I took some time, and on three separate occasions, I went and parked so that I could see what was happening. And I was appalled. There were not only cars speeding, but also mopeds and scooters coming the opposite way, weaving in and out. The street is rather narrow, and there were many children playing on both sides, and it was dangerous. There's also an incline. So, I just hope that Traffic and Parking can consider some mitigation for these issues.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, moving on.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Robinson. Ordered that the City Manager provide to the city council a report on ARPA funds containing the following information: how much money was spent on each program, how many residents were served by each program, evaluation metrics, and what processes were used to determine whether or not each program should continue to receive funding.
Counselor Robinson?
Adopt this shenanigans under suspension. If there are no objections?
Seeing none. Do you wish to speak?
No.
Okay, moving on.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Robinson. Ordered that the City Manager provide an update to the city council on the restoration of the commuter real quid.
Counselor Robinson?
Adopt this shenanigans under suspension. If there are no objections?
Seeing no objections. Moving on.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Cooper. Whereas pursuant to Section 2-10 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, the Chelsea City Council has the authority to establish an annual salary for its members. Now therefore be it ordered that Section 2-60A of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Chelsea be amended by striking the current language and replacing with the following. Quote, "Effective upon the city council term commencing January of the year 2026, members of the city council shall receive an annual salary of $33,000."
Like to adopt under suspension. If there's no objection, like to speak on it?
Seeing no objections, Counselor Jimenez?
I object to doing it unanimous under suspension.
Well, we'll do it under roll call vote.
Yeah, yeah.
Under roll call vote, okay. Counselor, you have the floor.
This is not a humana's pay raise. It doesn't affect us. It affects the next council. The reason why I'm doing this is very simple. We are not allowed to vote cost of living adjustments for any counselor here. Other cities and towns are allowed to do such a thing, but our charter does not allow us. So, we are not even close to what other cities and towns get, to all the things that they get. We do as much work as anybody else. What you're actually doing is you're giving a $5,000 raise in a two-year period. That's $2,500 to each counselor. That's minimal amount of money. That's your cost of living adjustment. Since we are not allowed to get cost of living adjustment, this is what this is. There's another way to give the council, or the future council or whoever's there, a cost of living adjustment because we can't give ourselves cost of living adjustment. So, this is just a cost of living adjustment. In another way, let me put it in a simple way. We're not giving ourselves a pay raise. The way inflation is today, the way things are today, we're only giving ourselves, or not us, because it doesn't affect us. It affects the next council. You're giving the next council an opportunity for cost of living adjustment, which by the charter, you cannot do. That's all this is. You can ask the city solicitor. You can ask them all. We cannot give ourselves a cost of living adjustment. It's not allowed by charter. So, if we cannot give ourselves a cost of living adjustment, how are you gonna do it? Everybody else is allowed to, but we're not. So, this, don't think the public out there that we're killing you, that we're saying, "Well, we want a bigger raise." This council, or whatever council that comes next, does its work for the city. And it's not asking for a lot of money. It's only asking for 2,500. That's up to these councils if they want to give it to them. Some people might say, "Well, that's too much money." It's not. It's another way to give a cost of living adjustment. It's not a pay increase.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Santiget?
Can I please clarify? It says in the order that it's an increase in the annual salary. So, that would not be $2,500.
Yes, it would because it's two years. You can only, let me explain. We cannot give, can I, am I allowed to explain?
Yes.
I'll let you understand. I'll explain to you how it operates. Can I explain? You want me to explain it to you?
I think I understand that.
Well, it's not, what you're doing is, we have to put it in 18 months before it comes. 18 months. So, that means we, the next council, will have to get it. If you don't put it in now, you can't do it.
That's not what I'm questioning. I'm questioning your figures. So, it's increasing by $5,000 a year, so it's not 2,500.
It's two years.
Right, 5,000 each year.
Five, no. It's only 5,000. It's $2,500 a year.
Okay. We're going to move forward if there are no other questions?
It's $10,000. It's not five.
Can we just clarify the math from the chair?
Yes.
It's 5,000 in two years.
I'll have a point clarity done with our clerk.
Technically, if you want to claim it's broken up over two years, but it's a $5,000 pay increase for your annual salary. So, your salaries are right now 28,000, effective upon the council term beginning January of 2026, which is not this council technically. The salary will go up to an annual of 33 per year. So, that means for each, it's 5,000 each year of your term.
Okay. Counselor?
It's $5,000 for each term, for each year.
Okay. Counselor Brown, and then I think Counselor Teshi?
It's $5,000 additional to what we make today a year. So, whether, whatever council comes in, it's $5,000. It's not 2,500.
Okay. Any other question? Hold on, Counselor. Counselor Teshi, and then Counselor, Counselor Teshi?
Yeah. I would just say this is, as many of you know, it is my first term as a counselor, and I am happy to be representing the City of Chelsea. I will say I would be personally abstaining from voting on this because I do feel, you know, it is, to me, it is an honor just being here. So, I will not be saying yes, not be saying no. But I do hear the sentiments of other counselors, and I do, you know, see the difference between what other cities make and what we make. That is a valid point 100%.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right. May I suggest that before we proceed to a roll call vote, if there is any confusion on the writing, that we go into another?
Can I just, one more explanation? This is what, maybe it's simplified. We cannot vote every year. We can only vote every two years. So, if you're gonna, if you, in two years, you're giving it, it's get $5,000. This is what? You gotta explain to the public. You can only vote.
Counselor, the writing that you are requesting a vote on right now is unclear. And so, I would feel, well, it's unclear to the point that the counselor thinks that it's a different type of order than what is on writing. And so, I would suggest that we go back and rewrite and then proceed. Counselor Taylor?
I have a point of clarification. Is, tonight would be the last night to put this, to actually pass this in order for it to take effect for the next council, correct?
No.
No? The point of clarification?
The charter requires you to put this in 18 months before the next term. So, yes, that's correct.
How does the council wish to proceed?
I'd like to speak on it. Can I speak on it?
Yeah. Oh, yes. Go ahead, Counselor.
So, look, I was, I was, I was the one that proposed the previous raise for the council's salary because I felt it was really, we were really being underpaid for the amount of work that we do. And, you know, granted, some counselors do more than others, but I know how much I do, and I thought that that was a fair thing. I don't think that this is particularly an egregious ask. However, I don't think it was wise to just plop this on the council without having the public having a chance to weigh in on what they think. And so, what I would humbly suggest is that we forego this for this term, and we can revisit it in the next term. And if you wanted to make up the difference or whatever it is on the next term, we can have that debate, and we can have the public's input about, you know, look, I mean, the public has a right to weigh in here. They're the ones that are paying our salaries. And if they feel like we're doing a good job, then they'll support it. If they, if they think we're not doing a great job, then maybe they won't. So, I would, I would suggest that maybe we wait until the next council to do that.
If the council wants to put it to bed, put it to bed. So, let's take a roll call for who wants to put it to bed and who doesn't.
Okay. I have one question pending, and then we'll proceed with whatever the body would like to proceed with. Counselor Jimenez?
I don't have a question, just a comment. This council, in the current term, doubled the salary for what it previously used to be. I think that it is not, you know, especially given the times that we are living, where, you know, the cost of everything is up, the fact that we have already increased our salaries to what they are right now, I don't think it's prudent for us to have another raise. I really don't. And I think if we, if we want to have a conversation about it for the future, I'd be open to having that conversation. But as of right now, I'm voting no on this. And I understand that this is not for us right now, but given the way that Chelsea has operated over the last 20, 30 years, many of the people who are on this body who are voting on this are going to be here in two years. Therefore, the idea of saying that it's not for us, it really doesn't sit on any kind of reality because most of us will be here. Maybe I won't be here, but I can guarantee you that most of us are going to be here in two years. So, I think that the idea of saying that this is not for us is not based in reality. So, I will be voting no on this.
Any other comments?
It really doesn't matter if it's for us or not.
So, okay. Okay. Counselor withdraws. Moving on.
Next item under new business. Order introduced by Counselor Cooper. Ordered that the City Manager instruct relevant departments to repair all handicap ramps around City Hall.
You have the floor, Counselor.
We spend all kinds of money on everything, but you go down the school side, the side is all cracked, and it's so steep that if you're in a wheelchair and you ain't got brakes, you're gonna slam into the wall. So, we should do something to take care of the disabled people. You have another one on the other end with the doors closed. You can't get in. The one that has the chair that brings you in and out, the door's always closed. I don't know why they close it all the time. So, what are you doing to the handicap people? One, you got one that's all broken up, that the cement is all cracked and it's so steep. If somebody comes, you smash, like I just said. You lose your control of your wheelchair, and you're done. The other one, the door's closed. You can't get in. So, why are we doing this to disabled people? We care about the people that are disabled. I care. I think the rest of us care too. All of us care. So, it should be a better job, and I would like to know why that door is closed. What is the reasoning behind that door being closed? It should never be closed, especially if you have the ramp that brings you up and down on the chair. So, I would like an explanation why it's closed and like to get the other one fixed too.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on.
Next item under new business. Order introduced by Counselor Cooper. Ordered that the City Manager work with relevant department heads to ensure large vehicles and heavy equipment used for construction projects are removed from city streets at the end of each day, or when police details are assigned to locations where such equipment cannot be removed to ensure adequate flow of traffic.
Like to adopt under suspension? Like to speak on it?
You have the floor, Counselor.
I must introduce this order 150 million times already. And like they say, persistence is what will get you. So, I'm persistent. I keep doing the same thing. If we have an ordinance that says to do that, it should be obeyed because the ordinance are set by us. So, we set a law, and nobody follows it. What is the point of us making ordinances? If we make an ordinance, everybody should follow it. I get some points that everything needs to be fixed, everything needs to be, whatever it is. But if the ordinance says, if you have wheels and you move it, especially in a city like ours, which is small, and it's relatively full of traffic, and you hinder the traffic of moving, what you do is you make a bottleneck. So, that should be obeyed. There's nothing wrong with wanting trailers and small vans to be moved out of the parking spot where the people could park. That's what we have the ordinance for. So, I would like the ordinance to be enforced. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on.
Next item under new business. We have an order introduced by Counselor Hermenas Rivera. Whereas the Chelsea City Council has authority under Section 2-6 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea to hire employees to conduct the business of the city council.
Counselor Jimenez?
I'd like to waive the rest of the reading and move this to the Labor Relations Committee, and I would like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections. You have the floor.
Thank you. So, this order would codify an ordinance that the employees of the, of the city council, which right now there are two, two staff in our office, have the right to self-organize and join a union. In my opinion, this is a right that they already have. So, this, in my opinion, would just be clarifying and codifying that they do have a right to unionize within the, within the, our ordinances. And it also delegates some of our powers that we have in terms of negotiation with our employees to the City Manager for negotiation purposes and for, in terms of negotiating with the bargaining unit with the union. Grievances would be managed through the council president. The specifics of this are up for discussion, which is why I am sending this to a subcommittee for further discussion. If people have strong feelings about any of the specifics here, I, we would love to have that conversation so that we can make sure that we are creating a good process for this. And I just wanna, you know, earlier, we took a vote to change the salary for the position for our clerk. I just want to say that in addition to, you know, if we want to appreciate our staff, in addition to talking about how much they make, it's not just about money, right? It's about ensuring that their rights as workers are secure and that they are able to, you know, secure for themselves what they want in their own employment. So, I think that it's important that they, that they have the opportunity to do this. And so, hoping that we will have a good discussion in the subcommittee.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on. Counselor Robinson?
Actually, our employees are exempt employees, which we have the right to hire. We have the right to give them a contract. For all the years I've been here, I think it's been working pretty well. I don't think we should give up our power as to having a, it's an option for our employees if they want to join a union. You know, who are they gonna be negotiating with? You know, we set the salary. We determine the years of the contract. So, I'm really not in favor of this, for the record.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, moving on.
Next, we have an order introduced by the council president. Whereas, flat iron entered. Objection noted.
I'm sorry, could you clarify what the objection is?
Counselor Brown objects to first reading.
I would, I would ask...
Clerk, can you walk us through then where this would land?
Council Rule 31. Every order, ordinance, and resolution presented before the council before being put upon final passage shall have at least two separate readings, and those readings... and those readings shall not occur at the same meeting except for unanimous consent of the council. If one councillor objects, moves to a second reading.
Councillor Jimenez?
Just point of clarification, that, is councillor Brown objecting to the reading or to us doing something with it? Because my understanding is, we have to have the reading, we just can't do something about it if anybody objects. It has to go to a second reading. So I don't understand what an objection to a first reading means.
Councillor Brown, seeing as there's a lot of confusion, do you mind giving some insight?
I feel like we, we have a clerk who can actually tell what the rules are and what we're able to do.
The item can be read technically in its entirety, but his objection means you can't act upon it in any capacity during this meeting. It'll have to be acted upon in the next council meeting, whether it be the next regular meeting or a special meeting, if council chooses.
I think the question councillor Jimenez has is more about your decision to object-
So that's a discussion I don't think you can have. I mean, again, the rule states that it could be read, but no actions, no discussion or however you would move forward or cease.
Got it. So we're, we're essentially just objecting to something that has not happened, which is moving to adopt. Right, so, right.
I mean, for the councillors, it's been here for the last seven months or the last six months.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not objecting to why you're objecting, I, I just wanna make sure that I understand.
But it's the procedures of the rules, it's clear.
So, the item has been read, right? Now, there is no motion to do anything with it, therefore, we are moving along, right? So, because it has to be read for a first time in order for it to be read a second time. So if we're objecting to a first reading, then there is no first reading. So I just wanna make sure that I understand. The councillor is objecting to us doing something with it, so next time we meet, we will be having the second reading and then voting on it, correct?
Clerk, is that correct?
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
Great. That is different from the motion that was made at the abduction, but I will, yeah, great, I have no further-
Councillor Robinson.
Yeah, I guess, with all the confusion, I guess our obligation as a committee, the president has the option to call for a special meeting at any point in time, if you wanna look at this process. That would be up to you as the president. You know, we could have a, a conference or a special meeting in regards to explaining, explaining-
One second.
Explaining where we are and what we're doing.
Okay. Are you referring to the process that just happened with the abduction? Okay, not to the actual Flatiron project. We are not talking about Flatiron in this, right? Because we had a subcommittee where they went thoroughly into details.
There are other questions that people have.
Correct.
Right, so, right. So I'm saying that we have an option to be able to have a special meeting and a conference. Or conference and a special meeting, however you wanna work.
Yes, I'm well aware of that councillor. Councillor Cooperrow.
All this is a, it's a big waste. We already had all this. We had public hearing, we had everything. So why is the problem with this? Okay, I understand he objects the first reading, fine, but like councillor Jimenez says, the second time we vote, it'll be yes or no. That's, and the coun- council president has the ability to call a special meeting at any time, so when we, she calls one and we come back, right? We can vote out and say, this is what we wanna do and that's it. There should be no argument then about anything. This is how it operates, right? It shouldn't be, whatever, we already had meetings, we don't want any more meetings. We had public hearings, we had meetings, that ain't gonna resolve anything. Either we accept it or we don't. That's all it is to it. No more going from here to there to there. So I understand you object this first reading, fine, but the set, next time it comes up, we just take a roll call vote and that's it.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Taylor.
So, the councillor is within his rights to object and send it to, th- th- those are the rules. There's no, you know, he, he has every right to do that. In, in, you know, in relation to where we stand with all of this, it was, it was my understanding that we would only be voting on the pilot tonight.
Correct.
And yet, we have the, the other before us as well. So I know that there were some changes to parts of the agreement and so I understand why some people, you know, I, I'm okay with it, I was ready to go forward, but, but, you know, the councillor's within his rights to do it and, you know, there have been changes. So I, I think that if, if somebody's unclear on, on some aspect of this whole deal, you know, I, I, I understand that because there have been changes. So, you know, I think it's, it's up to, it's up to the city manager and also those, those unsure councillors to please reach out to the client and to the city manager to solve whatever clarifications with any parts of this agreement that exist. That's all.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Jimenez?
I just have a really quick comment. There have been multiple meetings about this. There have been meetings on, off this, of, we have had a conference subcommittee that everybody was invited to and where things were discussed ad nauseam. I know that Flatiron has reached out to all the councillors and had conversations with everybody. So I think it does not make sense that we are not going to be moving on this tonight. I understand that that is within the rights of any councillor. I just wanna say that my opinion on that is that it is ridiculous that we are not moving on this and I would like to call for the city council president to schedule a special meeting as soon as possible so that we can do so.
Thank you councillor. I would like our city manager to share a few words.
Suspension of the rules, thank you councillor.
Thank you councillors. You know, I, I do understand that this is a, a, a very big project. It, it's probably one of the largest projects that we'll be doing for a couple of years. I, I will say that, that I, I have been incredibly impressed with, with the outreach that the, the developer has had on this project. They had two community meetings a, a, around the, the project site. They reached out to me before I started in this position and, and, and we have met with them, you know, on many occasions, right? Including one last time, last week while I was on vacation, to, to finalize what I believe is, is a transformative and impactful project for the city. I do understand that the, the council ha- has some concerns. I, 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 along with our, our city solicitor, have, have, have tried to, to do our best in incorporating all of the, the, the concerns and, and providing solutions to a, a, as many of those as possible. In, in, in any relationship, in, in any, any bargaining table, it's about a, a relationship, a long-term relationship and, and not getting, you know, what we want, but, but making it a win-win for, for all parties involved. We are talking about an entity that, that hopefully is gonna be in Chelsea for a long time. And we're also signaling to, to members in the industry, right, that, that we want Chelsea to be open for jobs, for green jobs, for green projects, for, uh, uh, projects that are, that are burgeoning in, in, in our, our Commonwealth, particularly around renewable energy, in, in solar, in wind and, and, and battery storage. So I, I do understand that, that the, the council has shared a, a lot of concerns about the, the, the host community agreement and councillor Teshi had a proposal, which I thought was, was a, a smart one, which was essentially taking the order that is, is before you tonight and essentially removing that from the, the conversation and, and simply focusing on, on the pilot agreement. What that will do is, is, that will allow the, the developer to continue on their way, i- i- in their process on, on their end. As, as you know, the, the, this developer is, is gonna be here for the next twenty years, right? And, and it's not a, a single time that this conversation will happen. They are coming before the planning board, they are coming before the zoning board of, of appeals and even after that, we'll be involved with them in construction. They have been excellent in coordinating with our fire department, with, with our office and I know they have really tried at, at, at being meaningful in their engagement in our community. So I, I do respectfully request for the councillor to, to reconsider and, and really specifically vote or, or focus rather, on a modified council order, which, which would only involve the, the pilot payment. Thank you.
Thank you city manager. Councillor Garcia and then councillor Teshi.
Yeah, good evening everyone. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Iron, I'm sorry, Flatiron, because not only have they held multiple community meetings, they have held, they have been here multiple times and they're partnering with our local unions. So I know we have a couple carpenters, shout out to them. I know you are also partnering with our iron workers and our ABEW, which many members live here in Chelsea. And so that's one of the, tonight I came in really hoping to get the ball rolling on this. It's been on our agenda for multiple days now. And so, yeah, I would like to get some movement on this, but.
Thank you councillor. Thank you. Councillor Teshi.
Yeah, I was just gonna make a, you know, expansion and explanation on what the city manager mentioned about what my amendment was going to be on the order had we proceeded with it. And that is, you know, I've taken a, a look at what the pilot program looks like and I've, you know, gone through the numbers with the, the city manager. However, my only thing with the order was it did mention the host agreement, which, you know, we were told that was not gonna be a subject of the matter. We were only gonna be focusing on the pilot for tonight. I thought, you know, that was a, a, a pretty good route to go on. And, you know, the city manager, the city manager did ask the councillor if he would reconsider and, you know, perhaps he might be good if he gives an answer to that.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Jimenez?
I'd just like to move this to a second reading.
Councillor Jimenez, moving this to a second reading. Councillor Brown?
I've already voted. I mean, to vote, I've already stated the objection, so just go back. I thought that debate was, I was just listening, I thought the debate was dead, I, you know, just sat here.
I'll also give a huge shout out to Flatiron and our union partners in the room and I hope that we, moving forward, take some time- to, to have these conversations and, and attend the, the meetings that, that we have in subcommittee conference to, to get, you know, for future. I mean, I think this, this is a huge, huge project investment, not for this body, for the future of Chelsea. It encompasses everything that we have put into our priorities when we started back in January and I hope that this body can move this forward swiftly and, and continue to do what's right for the city of Chelsea. All right, let's move on.
Next item under new business, we have an order introduced by councillor Cooperrow. Order that the city manager instruct the Department of Housing and Community Development to have staff available to assist residents with filling out forms related to housing rehabilitation program.
Adopt under suspension, if there's no objection, like to speak on it?
Councillor Cooperrow.
We have a program that helps the homeowners of our city, but from what I understand, it was only two people that it got help. A lot of them, with the money we have and we only help two people, that's kinda strange that only two people can get help. There should be more people. We should have someone downstairs. I know that the program has changed, that they hire new people. Well, maybe it's time that they have one particular person to help these people that want to get help to fix their homes. They don't know how to apply for these things. To tell them exactly what to do and how to do it and help them. There should be something downstairs, someone should do it. And I, I believe that there should be more than to help two people. With the money that we put aside to help these people, only two people out of fourteen thousand? What do we got? Thirteen, how many homes do we actually have in this city? Out of all those homes that we have, I can't give you the number because it keeps growing every time, there's more buildings going up, so I can't tell you the exact number, but there's plenty of them. So out of all of them, only two people in this whole city qualify? So there must be a, a problem with either the applications or people don't know how to fill them, or maybe they're asking too many things. I remember one guy told me he got disqualified because he had some kind of trash ticket that he didn't pay. So when he put in the application, he got rejected because he owed some type of money to the city somehow. So these people, before they go through, they should go downstairs, go through the records and find out how these people can qualify. Instead of filling the application then, say, well, you don't qualify because you owe money. There should be something done to help our people. I don't think two is enough for the money that's put aside for them. So I hope the city manager goes and instructs the department downstairs to have someone to help the people when they want, to help them in Spanish and in English. They should both be allowed and understand what they're filling and tell them right there if they have a problem. They shouldn't make an application and then wait. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, moving on.
We have an order introduced by councillor Robinson. Order that the city manager provide to the city council a list of the members comprising the Chelsea Job Coalition as mentioned during the council subcommittee on conference held Monday, June tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Adopt this unanimously under suspension, if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, moving on.
We move on to public announcements.
Councillor Sanagate and then I'll do councillor Taylor and then Cooperrow.
Thank you. I actually have two. The first one is to commend the Chelsea Fire Department, the Office of Emergency Management, all the other agencies, city departments who have helped with the fire. It was a horrible fire in my district at eighteen Marlborough Street on June fourteenth, fast-moving. There was a time when people weren't sure that their pets were out, someone was in a towel in front of my home, just awful. So, thirty-six people were displaced and hopefully they'll find accommodation again soon, but I just wanted to give a shout out to everyone who's helped, but especially the fire department and the Office of Emergency Management for knocking it down. It was bad and fast, so thank you. My second announcement involves Ron Fishman and Bonnie Fishman. Ron Fishman officially retires. He has done so much work for the past twenty years for Chelsea Hunger Network and has been working with Mass General and was instrumental during the pandemic with organizing all of the pantries and programs to feed people here in the city. He's been working remotely for ten hours a week for the past year and a half. He and his wife Bonnie, who also worked for the MGH as a social worker for many, many years in the city, live in San Diego now, but now this is their official retirement. So I just wanted to wish them well and thank them again for their decades of service to our city.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Taylor?
Thank you madam president. This is the last meeting before our, our summer recess and it didn't, it didn't, I was planning on introducing an order to have a subcommittee on conference on parking in this city. But since we're going into our, our, our summer break, it didn't seem to make a lot of sense. We'd do it in the first meeting of the next, in the next session. However, since some, I had some calls today about, about parking and I, I really want to have a series of public meetings, one in every district, to invite the public in, to, to, to weigh in on a comprehensive parking policy. We do not need to have a cookie cutter parking policy in this city. Each, each, each district has its own issues, problems and, and whatever. And I think that the citizens really, we owe it to them to be able to weigh in on a comprehensive parking problem that is going to address one of the major thorns in every, every citizen's side here. So I'll be, I'll be doing that next- So, um, I'll be, I'll be doing that, uh, next, uh, in the next meeting. And, uh, I just want the people at home to understand that we, we understand that this is a problem, and we wanna do something about it. It's on our, our legislative agenda. And so, we haven't moved on it yet. We will move on it, I promise. And, uh, uh, you know, I want everybody in this city who, who is concerned about parking to come to these public meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Recupero?
I have two, two things. One, uh, we might be on a vacation, but we're really not on vacation. So if you need to call us, you can call us anytime you want to, and, uh, we're always available to you, the public, because we're here for you. The next thing I wanna say is I wanna go back to what my fellow counselor says. For one, people outside, let me, let me tell you something, and this is the truth. The truth is that we have no power over parking. So you can call us a million times, there's nothing, nothing the city council can do for you. So, don't go out and say, I hate my counselors, they ain't doing nothing for me. That's not what it is. Our charter dictates that we cannot tell them anything. So like my fellow counselor says, we gotta go back to it and maybe adjust it. Here's an example. My district is all one ways. Whoever's in charge of these things has no consideration for the public at all. It just has consideration for themselves to dictate to you how you're gonna live. Because if you have a one-way street and you've got construction all over the place, you reverse it and make it a two-way street for that particular time. My district is all one ways, so if you shut it down, you can't go anywhere.
Counselor.
Was there a amount of time?
Can we, can we stick to just announcements? I love the passion, but let's stick to this announcement.
A public announcement means you can announce anything you want to.
Okay. We have a few more announcements.
Wait a minute, Mr. Clerk, can you explain to me what that means?
Okay, counselor?
Do you want me to?
Go ahead.
Technically, under council rules, all public announcements have to be brought to the council president for permission before being submitted on the floor. Technically.
Well, well, technically, if you're asking the council president, if you can speak, she's giving you permission, is she?
Yes, counselor. Can you, can you stick to some of the announcements?
All right, so we'll, we'll just finish that. So, he, here's the final thing I got to say.
Thank you.
If you have problems, think ahead, because your city's being constructed all over the place. So try to think what's the best way, or call whoever you think is the person that can help you the most, to go and navigate around the way it is. Because otherwise, you're gonna have issues. And I can see the frustration on people's because of that. So this is the only announcement I can tell you is, please, don't get so frustrated. We're here to help you as much as we can. We'll try to help you, because we are limited to the amount that we can help you with. So thank you, and have a nice week and weekend and all summer. We'll see you after the summer.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor, uh, Garcia, and then Counselor Brown.
I'll make it super brief. I just want to say thank you to the public. It's been an honor to serve as your Chelsea City Counselor at large. Year one is down, year two is starting up in September. I hope that our youth stay safe, and I, um, as Mr. Recupero said, we are here to, uh, we are here for your service, or at your service.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanna piggyback on my col, colleague, um, Lisa Sanagate, about Ron Fishman and his family for the work that they've done in Chelsea over the years. I started working with Ron, and I didn't know he was retired and didn't know he was moving on, but wanna wish him and his family very, um, much of happiness and success, because they brought that to the city of Chelsea. I'm sure, uh, many Chelsea residents have those bowls still in their houses where we started about fifteen years ago. We used to do the bowls, but the, the project behind the bowls where you would feed people also. You would come in, you would support it by buying a bowl, melting a bowl, molding a bowl, but later on, you would also get food in those. So I wanna thank him and his family for the dedication of the service and helping those out that was not only hungry, but those that were in need, and, uh, the consideration they had for our city. So, you know, sometimes we forget to say that in their face when they're here, but I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Jimenez?
I just would like to encourage my fellow counselors to actually stick to the rules. This is not a time for thank yous and complaints. It is a time for announcements of things that are coming up in our community. Let's please try to stick to our rules and submit announcements ahead of time so that we don't just have open speaking time.
Thank you, counselor. Before we head out, gala is Thursday, so I hope to see everyone in their best outfits and ready to do some dancing and some, have some fun. And Bee and her team is working on getting July first kickoff with all of the summer youth programs for our kiddos. There's, it's not too late, you can still submit if you wanna be part of any of the Chelsea rec programs that are happening this summer. I hope, okay, let's do moments of silence.
Moment of silent, silence for a great baseball player who just passed away. We just celebrated June teen, so we definitely should mention his name, Willie May. He's one of the greatest baseball players of all time, uh, who has done so much for humanity in this world, and wish his family, um, much condolence and sympathy at this hour.
Leo.
Works at the, um, city clerk's office. Moment of silence in regards to her sister who just passed. She just lost her father around six weeks ago. And also for my friend, Terry Griggs, who happens to be my daughter's, uh, father-in-law, who passed away. We just had a memorial service for him on, on Saturday.
Thank you, everyone.